Hello, hello.
Hi, Ms. Johnson.
Hello. Hello, hello.
Oh, my gavel. What is that?
Oh, oh, yeah.
You can use your fist.
I like playing it.
I like, I like when you. Has a nice little ring to it.
This is not. Yeah, it's a smaller. It works.
All right. Did you have a block too?
Yeah, it's a small and block.
Okay.
Because we want to get started.
Everybody's mic on?
Yes.
Is Rob coming? So Cecilia was going to report in.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So actually, Human Resources is up first.
They usually last. Lucky.
Okay. Everybody see next to me?
Yes.
Everybody ready?
Yes.
You ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of District Heights City Meeting. It is Thursday, June 6, 2024. And the time is 7:03 PM. And I call this meeting to order. At this time, Commissioner Gomez, would you do the opening prayer?
Yes. Everyone, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to ask you today. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture their bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our community. And continue to remind us why we are here today. And all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service for humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for that, Commissioner Gomez. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Jennifer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for Commissioner Jennifer for the pledge of allegiance. So now we're to the approval of the agenda. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been posted online in the clerk's office. If the commission has had time to review and there are no additions to the agenda, I can entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Vice Mayor Harkett moved to approve tonight's agenda.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner tell me a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four zero, motion passed. Thank you for that. There is one item proposed for tonight's consent agenda, and it is item seven. And that is to award authority increase playground specialists. Has the commission had a chance to look at that information?
Yes.
So is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Yes. Aye, Commissioner Gomez, move that the city commission approve the consent, the consent agenda of June 6, 2024.
Could I get a second?
Aye, Commissioner Jennifer, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four. Thank you for that. And so now we will start the department reports. So we do have an adjustment on their report. So we do have the treasurer's report. David, could you just give us an update on?
Yes, the treasurer's report is available in the packet. Mr. Basilio, the city treasurer is out of town. And the report was initially planned on being given by the city's accounting manager, Ms. Cecilia Smith-Bud. Regrettably, she has had to go out for a medical emergency. And so I would ask if the commission has questions about the treasurer's report, please send them to Mr. Basilio or Ms. Smith-Bud directly, and we will answer them following their return.
Thank you for that, David. So next up is Human Resources, Chris Lawson, HR Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and attending residents. I'm Chris Lawson with Human Resources. And this is our Human Resources report, June 6, 2024. I know you have the report, but there's some changes that have happened within the last 48 hours since I provided you with the report. I'll start with our current number of vacancies currently are five and also five in improvement stage. In terms of our new hire announcements, I was going to say that, you know, one of these positions was still pending. But as of just a couple of days ago, we were able to secure our senior center director. And I think you'll be very impressed with this gentleman. And he starts on.
June 17.
June 17.
Yeah, that's, that's embroidered.
Yeah, his name's Tomiko Thomas. I think I'll just wait and let David do the announcement at the next meeting. If you want me to touch on a couple of things, I can, but I know there's a format we go right ahead. All right, well, bear with me a second. Pull out his extensive resume. I'm only going to share a few bullet points. Mr. Tomiko Thomas was a program director for Edgewood, Brooklyn, Family Support Collaborative in Washington DC, where he was a program director for school-based programs, community schools program, show-up, standout attendance program. He also spent time as the Housing Program Manager for assisted living in Howard County Department of Aging and Independence. As well as, he has been a social worker, a regional coordinator, as well as a community outreach and marketing consultant for Maryland Department on Aging. And the list goes on. He's just a great person. I think you're going to really appreciate him. He just had vast knowledge beyond the original interview. Got him here, he just, you know, expanded his whole experiments with us. So we're happy to, to have him. And he will join us on June 17. Moving right along, we also have secured a master landscaper, Mr. Martin Herder. We're very excited about Mr. Herbert as well. Let me just share a couple of, I was going to say this for his directors. Let me go ahead and just share a little bit about Mr. Herbert. He is a master landscaper. He most recently worked with MGM Grand Casino. He has also been the, I always have. Water culture manager for Congressional Cemetery in Washington DC. He's been the site supervisor for Mellowwood. And also landscape technician for Bowie State University. He did a tour with our Public Works Director, giving them ideas on how he would design the city. And they were blown away and everybody was happy with him. You can add some comments if you like. And so he has agreed and he's hired and he starts on Monday.
Okay. Okay.
So those are two hires. It's a little different than what I put in my original report. So those hires took place just, just recently. Do you have any questions on Lucy?
It just sounds exciting and exciting that they want to come here. That's really exciting. Yeah, I, I mean, I know, it's just extensive backgrounds. It's like, whoo.
Yeah, that was, I think that was a big one. Moving right along, Performance Management, we've been talking about that. We're still on track. We're finalizing the template. We will have this done within our fiscal year of July. We are still planning. We have another meeting today, David and I. We've narrowed down to a couple of different providers for benefits. Again, as I've said at least twice before, these are providers that can kind of help us streamline everything, with the exception of health insurance. So there are also programs that we're going to be considering such as disability, employee assistance programs, work-life programs, incentive programs. And all of those things will be able to come through one provider. These providers are well-known within the municipal community and do a very good job in terms of benefits and cost. Yes, benefits and costs. The next portion of my report is we were also, as I was talking about benefits, we were also considering whether or not it makes sense to make open enrollment consistent with the federal open enrollment period in the fall. Or if we're going to stay with the fiscal year. Don't know if you want to add anything to that as well, David. But we've been looking at the pros and cons of it to make it make more sense to people. It's not about rates or benefits being available at a particular time, but just consistency with what people have in their mind about open enrollment. It's always worked better, so we're considering that. We narrowed down to a couple of different providers to help us do that. Any questions there? Internship development. Internship development, moving a little slow, but we do have four candidates that I've identified. As well as we have a couple of city employees who have asked us whether or not their children can be a part of this. I think it's positive. If we do that, we would not allow them to be in departments of their parents. And so we'd be able to work through that. I think it's positive. I think it helps to accomplish the initiatives you've given us and the goals that you have set out for us in terms of internship. I want to thank Vice Mayor for making a recommendation. I spoke with them. And so we're going to get this young lady involved as soon as possible, as well as the mayor offered a couple of candidates as well. We've not been able to get through to Sutland just yet. School's closing, lots of things going on. We did make contact with Macamay. Also has the same situation, but they're sending out an email yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, I made contact by email. And they asked if emails were of help, and I say, yes, go ahead and put it out. Also, I'm going to be working with our Communications Director, Kelly, to put together a internship program that we can promote through the website.
Okay.
For the community. Okay, moving right along. Any questions there?
Any questions from the commission? Okay, you can keep going.
All right, keep going. The, there's a couple of things I want to touch on. So with regards to our personnel manual audit, we actually completed that as of last week, but there is one federal mandate that we're going to be adding to the personnel manual. It is the federal pregnancy, employee pregnancy mandate. And this is basically a law that we must follow in terms of any employees that are expecting things like standing, lifting, extra break times, and so on and so forth. That's the only, that's the only initiative that we have at this time. The manual is compliant. We work with a compliance officer who has looked at the Personnel Manual with me. You'll also meet one of our HR service representatives next week. I mentioned before, at one of our meetings, that I have some additional support coming. Her name's Janette Jones. She's not the compliance officer I'm talking about, but I'll introduce you all to her next week. She'll be assisting us with just some of the day-to-day initiatives with the. Any questions there? Okay. Questions? The only other thing that I have tonight are a couple of new initiatives that are underway that City Manager and I have been working with and are working with department heads. While moving through the process of working with department heads is our departmental service plan, as well as standard operating procedures. We've had one of our directors complete the departmental service plan. I think I mentioned this to you before, Public Works. And it's a very good outline, a very good plan, and we are helping her to work through it. And we felt that it was such a good, you know, roadmap that we would implement across all departments. We're still ironing it out, but I think it'll help with everything, including when someone is joining the organization or leaving. So those are our newest initiatives. There is one other position that was added yesterday, corporal and public safety. So we are starting the process for recruiting in corporal as well. That position got added on yesterday.
So we have the lieutenant, sergeant, and corporal?
Yes, those positions are already out.
Okay.
We are still looking for a police officer, as well as co-investor. And that's all we have tonight.
Oh, you sit on your table too? It's like training?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Well, we obviously leave that there because, you know, just say, I know Ms. Nance is doing all of our training, but we're, what they say, lock, stock, and barrel together on that and making sure that, you know, follows or maybe after different training sessions that she conducts to just make sure that it was effective, giving her a feed, helping her to understand, you know, how to apply different measures to it and so forth. But that's going pretty well. Everybody's attending as usual.
There was a training session today, right?
There was a training session for general staff today about effective communication, so effective interdepartmental and interpersonal communications. What I would just add on to Mr. Lawson's comments is that, you know, the commission has dedicated a lot of time and attention to developing not just its department heads, but also its line staff. And so we are about, give or take, halfway through the year's program that is focused on things like building positive culture, project planning, communications leading throughout the organization. One of the other things that Mr. Lawson and I have been starting to stand up this back half of the year is looking at, you know, some combination of, of him and I supporting the departments through the implementation of their inaugural project plans. So where we're trying to get to is a point where departments can present annual, biennial work plans to the commission for review, endorsement, and prioritization. Obviously, that starts small at the project level, but that's where we're headed. And incidentally, how it ties into the service planning discussion happening later tonight.
Any other questions or concerns from the commission?
I do just have one question.
Sure, Vice Mayor.
Where are, where are we all advertising these positions?
Indeed, mainly, in our city website.
So are we also, we're not using Glassdoor or Yum-Fan?
We haven't.
And we're not using MML?
We have posted there, but we didn't post these positions. The public, we posted some of the other positions there. I guess I want to say public safety is, I guess, is more unique for some reason in terms of finding, you know, candidates that have police background, sergeant, and so forth, but we haven't used those.
Are there any, are there any law enforcement specific databases or sites that maybe be a little bit more directed towards people looking for law enforcement jobs that?
I honestly don't know.
Maybe even like the Washington Post or something that, you know?
We could, we could try that, but one of, it's interesting that you asked that. And one of the things that I was just talking about yesterday was Fraternal Order Police.
Yeah.
Past and present. So I know the former president of the FOP, Vince Canales, put in a call to him. I have not heard back to figure out how we can place our ads with them. They do have a job board. So, but we haven't done that yet. One of the other things that we just started doing was chief and horn list at Anarom Community College, as well as Prince George's Community College have added a training. And so we've actually already gotten one candidate through that process. So those kind of are along the lines of what you're asking. But we can look at Glassdoor, post on MML. We posted on MML before for some of the other candidates. But we've actually gotten, you know, decent, decent candidates.
Okay.
But they go through a process before we can actually make contact with them. So the chief of depth, the chief can do somewhat of a background square before we can make contact.
Understood, yeah.
So that's what we're going to have. Thanks for those recommendations.
Okay, so looks like we don't, oh, so one of the, the landscaper?
Master landscaper.
Master landscaper. Will the Veterans Park be included in that job description to take care of with the?
Yes, we talked about that before.
Okay.
Back, our Public Works Director just walked in. She kind of gave you an overview of the tour and what all included.
Yeah, and there, and there's a couple of things that we're trying to accomplish with that position. As you know, this year is our inaugural year with America in Bloom. We're planning for that site visit. And this commission has also taken a special interest in both the environment and its green spaces in addition to tree canopy. And so we really did try and target the position to be able to support those types of initiatives and priorities. You know, the, and maybe Ms. Washington can speak to this best, but, you know, we had, had a specific landscaping company to deal with Veterans Park, but there's other spaces throughout the city that we want to update and improve landscaping on. The first one that comes to mind is the Clock Circle, but there are many others. And so we don't want to necessarily overwhelm the person.
Okay.
But our hope is to have them help us develop a, a more comprehensive in-house landscaping and beautification program.
But working with America Bloom as well?
Yes.
Okay, that will work. Okay. All right. Well, if there aren't any other questions or concerns, thank you, Ms. Lawson.
You are so welcome. Thank you for your time.
Recreation Parks and Culture, Jeffrey Taylor, Recreation Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Residents. Please accept the report for recreation for June twenty twenty-four. And starting out with our recreation activities and events. On May third, we have Food Truck Friday. May fourth was our senior sensor, was the senior sensor event. May eleventh was the Mother's Day Tea. And also on May eleventh was our men's and women's flag football. May fourteenth was the elections. And May twenty-seventh was the Memorial Day Ceremony. And last but not least, we have our class service and retention numbers, and that is five hundred and twenty-one. I'm sorry, not last, but not least. If you guys don't mind, it's actually not on the agenda, but it is so close. It's this weekend. I would love for you guys to come out in attendance. We're having a play by our longtime financial literacy instructor. It'll be held in the gym. Right now, we have allowed close to eighty-five, ninety people pre-registered. And it's called Broke in the Future. It's a musical play. It's very entertaining. And if you guys don't mind, I'll take a moment and just kind of read over the description real quick. So Broke in the Future is about a young lady named Melvin. She encounters her destined-to-be future self from twenty fifty-four, urging her to alter her destiny through Broke in the Future. She endeavors to steer young Americans clear financial pitfalls by teaching financial literacy and sharing her missteps through music, dance, and drama. So the play is from twelve PM to two PM this Saturday. And we'd love to see everyone in attendance. It's going to be very entertaining. And thank you for the opportunity. And that concludes the report for recreation. And I'll wait for any questions.
Any questions from the commission or concerns? So you'll be coming back up to discuss the rental?
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Public Works, Lakeisha Washington, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor. Oh, I said it loud. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No, it should be, if they said they could hear me, I'm pretty much sure of it. Okay, all right. So hello, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Residents, and staff. Please accept my May monthly report. So I wanted to provide a couple of updates and in our highlights this go-round, just to kind of give you some information about Fiesta Gardens. We'll start with that one. Where currently, we had some hiccups. Some of the hiccups were some of the trees, which I will share those findings too, but they have not consolidated them with the forest yet, the actual company. So I am waiting to get like a final summary, but I can give you a couple of our challenges that we've had. Tree placements were one of them in the topographic survey that discovered them. We realized that we had a little bit more space than what we thought we did, along with the pathway in Fiesta Gardens that we currently, the current location of Fiesta Gardens is kind of in way of the original pathway design that we also created too as well. Those are things that, again, I will share those detailed results as to that. However, we are moving forward until the next phase, which would be for us to meet, to discuss the new findings, and then kind of go over that within the next work session. I'll have a more detailed update for you all. The departmental achievements, we've made a lot of great strides, especially with our departmental operations. We drafted our SOP and we completed, it says final, but it's really a draft of the department service plan because we're going to be looking for insight input from you all too as well. And we've done a lot of extensive research when it comes to pretty sure it's county standards and Montgomery County standards when executing this SOP and doing some research on that. The indoor briefs, solution evaluations went pretty well. I was able to show you all samples for the bathroom renovations, get some input, and I did follow that guidance. I am waiting to get another quote as well and some more information from a couple of bids because we put this out as a bid and we'll have results. And I'll have that for you at the next July meeting because it'll be closed on June thirtieth for that. So we've been great with our work orders too. This month, it's going to seem like the numbers are kind of down compared because we've been creating, we created daily and more weekly tasks to cover a lot of the tickets that were coming in that we noticed, like such things as trimming back leaves, reporting and assessments of dead trees and things of that nature. That's hence why it's a downside compared to previous months because now we're noticing and reflecting and we're able to make some changes along that way. But all of those work orders have been completed. We supported our veterans by, with the Veterans Committee in organizing and facilitating the Veterans Day celebration. We also partake in the, well, the city infrastructure enhancement is another ongoing effort that we're also utilizing, which they talked about beautification of spaces and things of that nature, and also infrastructure within the actual installation. To give you some more infrastructure maintenance updates, long fence have also provided us with some repairs and all the necessary things for the basketball court and for the walking path of the field. I would like you all to know that we're going to put a nice door, a padded block, which will be a key combination. That way, we can control the locks too on the inside from, for the basketball court when we have access and when they have access. We can technically be able to cut that off with, we're supposed to be able to do it with an application and we can provide hours for that. I've also added a perimeter fence for the lower fence that will connect from the stream to the second playground. So that's all being implemented and taken care of too as well. The gym window repair, we are still in progress with that. We're currently still researching contractors because we would like to actually get the window entirely replaced versus having the little section to make it one cohesive window. Because of that, it's taken us a little bit more time to find someone who kind of knocked down that steel frame and make it into one that's qualified to do so, so we're researching that as well. All of our upcoming initiatives, the urban tree program is still being developed. So please don't forget to look at that information, to give them a call or email us as well if you have any inquiries about that. Mosquito larva program, we actually did our first execution of that, which was June second. Although the initiative was supposed to start May twenty-ninth, they actually did the spray until June second. And that will be conducted through all of the entire summer. Community service reminders, yes, please, we have a lot of events and initiatives coming up. Please email us or if you have any volunteers or anything of that nature, we have a lot of community services. Please email us, or if you have any volunteers or anything of that nature, we have a lot of community service program. I mean, a lot of community service opportunities for our youth too as well. So please board them our way, or they can see the public affairs, and then they'll make sure that I also get that information too as well. And the yard sale, we recently moved the date of the yard sale, which will now be July twenty-second. We did that too for promotional reasons as well and marketing. And then also, we want to make sure that we have full participation from everyone, including our residents and our government body too as well. We realize that June has been an extremely eventful month, and we want to make sure that our residents get all of the information needed for that. And again, we need more volunteers for June eighth, the nineteenth, and the fifteenth as well for our Juneteenth effort. So if you know anyone or anyone that needs a few community service hours, again, please, please, please send them our way. And that will be it for our monthly, monthly report. Do I have at all any open for questions for the commission?
I have a question. A C in the gym, where are we with that?
Okay, so Pepco, we've been working with Pepco as well, along with another grant initiative that we had, that we have going on. So I want to say that we're still in the very much development phases of finding a suitable contractor to replace it. J P G has also given us an assessment too and provided their recommendations as well. So it's in progress, but we are on it because I know that it's something that is very, I'll have more of a suitable report for you at our next work session.
So in the meantime, how do we keep the gym cool? We have two fans. So.
I will, I will either assess it, and I will have those possibly within a week. But for the meantime, I guess we can either order some more fans or I can get a mobile A C unit or units to kind of keep the gym cool in the meantime. But right now, we're down, it needs to be a dual HVAC system. And right now, we only have one in one of our one systems. And also keeping the senior building cool as well, that also poses a danger too. So it's sort of like sharing, I guess you could say we're sharing A C. Yeah.
So what we need, go ahead, David. Madam Mayor. So what we're trying to accomplish with Pepco is not just a replacement of the HVAC unit that is sort of perpetually down. We're trying to replace the entire system with both something that's going to work better and be more efficient and environmentally friendly, and we're trying to incentivize Pepco to pay for most of it. So that, that's what we're working through right now. Pepco has been onsite twice.
Actually, three times.
Three times. And is working with us to scale an appropriate system. They're also working with staff on the grant application itself.
Yes.
And the identification of contractors.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So in the meantime.
In the meantime, I'll make sure we get another industrial fan. I'm sure we can probably get one from Sunbelt. They pretty much have the ones that can kind of fill up the space. That's what I meant by like a mobile or industrial size. We can rent that in the meantime, so it's not like a cost that we would incur right away.
Question on that.
Sure.
What, which grant are we applying to?
It's a electric, so it's a full electrical grant for solar power. I would get you.
Is it a federal grant, state grant, private grant?
It's through, it's, it's Pepco paying for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so it's a program that they administer to encourage businesses, municipalities, things like that, to acquire and install and retrofit energy-efficient units.
Okay.
So we're also working on the grant for the A C unit along with lights, replacing the lights too.
So what's the dollar amount of the grant that's needed to do the HVAC, entire HVAC system?
I haven't seen an actual dollar amount, but technically, they're supposed to incur a hundred percent of the cost. When they come out and they provide us with the actual quote and assessment, we're still waiting to actually get a date and scheduling and a timeline of when all of those things will occur and how that process works.
Yeah. One of the benefits of this is I, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city doesn't have to act as a pass-through. We essentially work with Pepco, scope the program, identify the, scope the program, scope the work. Work to identify an appropriate contractor, and I believe Pepco goes direct with the contractor.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So what's the timeline on, from start to finish of getting an okay that we would have a new HVAC system?
We won't know that yet until Pepco actually provides us with the results from their assessment. So I will, I will be able to obtain an answer or response for you if you just give me, I guess, until the next work session or until next week. I will consolidate and reach out to the representative to see how immediate, once the process does take place or once we get the grant and everything is secured, how long does it take for execution?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm just thinking about for, in the, in the meantime, what level of solution we need to keep the gym cool. I know there's, and thank you for getting that information to our, for our next work session. I know that there's a company, and please look into this to see if this will be feasible. It's, they're called Big, the, the bad word for donkey, Fans, okay? So I think some of, some of you are part of, yeah. And so they have these massive industrial-sized fans that you can have on the ceilings, and they're really good with circulating air. So depending on how long it takes for us to get this new HVAC system, that might be something we want to consider. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's sort of like the same thing with Sunbelt is what I was thinking, but if the big company has that thing. And they can actually put them in the ceiling and install them for us. That actually would probably be more of, not really a permanent solution, but more of a long-lasting temporary solution until we can figure out what's going on with.
Right. Because Jeff, we have camp coming up too.
Yes.
Right. So we need to.
It needs to be done, yeah.
Okay, all right.
This has been an ongoing process?
Yes, it has.
Three months, or at least for me, three months.
Well, it's been, it's been over.
Is it like a reoccurring issue?
Every year.
Make sure I was adding to.
Okay. All right, any questions, concerns from the commission?
I have one.
Sure, Commissioner, tell me.
So it's been a lot of, like, residents complaining about foxes, like, you know, in the backyard. And we, we saw the one on the field, like, you know, on the track. So, you know, what are we doing, I guess, what are we telling people about, about the issue of foxes?
So in the response to the email, I did a little bit of research because you sent me the inquiry. So I gave some recommendations as well, and we're going to make that like a formal communication and put that on out to District Heights. There are a lot of eco-friendly things we can do, along with how to not really deter them, but just in case something must happen, how to react to it, can do one into one. Let me see, I can actually find that email really quickly with those recommendations and kind of give you like an overview of what I went over. Just give me a second. It shouldn't be hard to find, I'll have to tell you the responses.
It's not needed. You could just post it online.
Yeah, I will, okay. Like, yeah, I gave like a couple of steps and things that you can do to kind of treat that accordingly. So I'll make sure we get that out there in communication.
But with that fence that you're putting up, like, you know, kind of keep them away, or what are we doing for the city part?
So with the perimeter fence, that is something that is wide scope that we would have to discuss. I really am interested in talking about that too, in actually getting a scope of work to actually be able to conceal the entire, surround the entire installation. The perimeter fence will only protect the kids or anyone else from any safety concerns as far as like going, you know, into the belly or anything like that, how many kids run in there. And so those are the reasons why. Hopefully, if there are some things that we can do naturally that I will get approval for and do a little bit more research on as well, then we could do on the installation to kind of like at least deter them from the installation. And then give residents some recommendations on how they can turn it from their own. I'll definitely bring that out there.
Yeah, I need that. We have this big, we have this big bush, well, we have several. And my neighbor told me, and I know birds nest inside, but you can't see where them nesting. He said it was about midnight, and he saw the fox go in the tree. And so they were trying to deter him because he knew the birds were nesting there. And they're sneaky.
Yeah, they are, and they're fast.
Yes. And I did not know until my neighbor told me. So, yeah, that was scary. So, but thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Oh, David, you wanted to.
I, I would say as Public Works explores mitigation by design that we can do to kind of help with, with the fox and wildlife issue, residents should feel comfortable both calling PG County Animal Control and police non-emergency. If they suspect an, an animal is dangerous, please report that directly to law enforcement and animal control.
And I will add one more update, see how you can spot if they're dangerous. Foxes are usually scared of anything that's fair to them, right? So they usually will run away if they see someone or if you shout or if you make a loud noise. If they come towards you, that is not safe, and that means that they have rabies. And you need to run, 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 okay? Don't engage, don't try to stop, hop and go to your tallest place, taller than a car even, because sometimes they're able to hop along the road or some cars too as well. So, yes, that is all that I would add.
And that would be good, that, when we get the information put on our website.
To, to, I'll make sure to get that and consolidate all of that information.
Okay. Commissioner, do you have a question?
I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the community yard sale and Shred's, Shred Day. How soon are we going to get that information out to the public? Because it was with the new date, because I, I know that there was information put out for the June, yeah, June twenty-second. So just want to make sure we get that information out to folks.
Yes, I will make sure I follow up with our communications team. They, so the information that was put out previously was sort of us just to try to get it out there and everything like that. But the flyer, I want to make sure it's coming from our, on a cohesive branding scale. It comes from our communications department. They should have that out if not, if we, by tomorrow, I'm pretty sure.
For sure.
Yeah, did we already pull that?
No, because you pushed that, you pushed that today.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about the, well, we'll make sure.
We'll work on that, okay.
I'll make sure with the communication, with the new flyer and information.
Okay. Who is going to be doing the shredding? Is that Bates again?
To my knowledge, it is Bates again, that will be doing our shredding for us. I'm assuming they were going to go with the same company. Honestly, I'm not exactly sure of the identifying company or contractor. I just know that they're coming on this date, and that they'll be there because my trusty team pretty much handles that for sure.
All right, great.
I'll make sure that I get at least the company name, but I think for the most part, it's Bates because that's who does our waste management.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
I have one more question on the mosquito larva spraying program. So they usually come on Sundays, is that what?
Yeah, so they, so they came June second only because of the previous week when they were supposed to start was Memorial Day weekend. They didn't come that day. So they'll come out once a month, and usually the treatment lasts thirty days. And they'll, they'll come before, two days prior before the thirty days is up. So it'll last anywhere from thirty-one to, I mean, thirty to thirty-two days. And that's when they spray, and they'll spray the entire city.
So is, so do we have staff to make sure that they're really spraying the whole city?
Well, the people who we do have in place is my operations manager. She pretty much checks in with the company, and the company gets her reports the day that they come. So just like she, for instance, when you ask the question, have they already been out? Yes, they came out June second.
So do we know the actual route that they do? That's what I want to know.
I have certainty on the actual route and exactly where they are.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because that would be helpful, just to say they come out.
Right, right, right.
You know.
Yeah, I want to say that one day, but I will double check that too.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Well, that's it. So you have a, a few things to follow up on.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Washington. Police Code Enforcement, Resident Business Services, Chief of Police Ronald Tarpley.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'll start today off with a positive note. I was a little tardy because I just came from the Hennawann Community College. Where there are new recruit officer, now Officer Jones. I officially graduated the academy today. One person up in our machine, right? That was a great time there. I mean, I think we also may have recruited a few other people out of that graduation class.
Are you sure? Or did you just give them a eye, like, you need to come over here? Like, you need to come over here?
Including maybe a nice young female who's score very high in the academy.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, we can snag her out there if we want, by all.
Okay, okay.
Add them onto the one team there.
Yes.
Please accept my report for May twenty twenty four. In May, the District Heights Police Department swan to the following calls per service. They are two assaults, two burglaries, two thefts and mottos, one vandalism, four thefts, one domestic. We had thirty-four vehicle impounds, four auto theft recoveries, one missing person, and seven other reports. The department had a total of two adult arrests and three warrant service arrests for the month of May. The department issued three thousand six hundred eleven speed camera violations, eight hundred and fifty-five stop sign citations, seven seatbelt violations, thirty-two parking citations, eight repair orders, and three hundred and forty-nine other, I'm sorry. Eight, three hundred and forty-nine warnings issued, and a hundred and forty-eight other citations were issued. The revenue for May consisted of a hundred and fifty dollars for crashes and reports, one thousand thirty-five dollars in parking citation fees collected, fifty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five speed camera citations revenue received, and two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars in vehicle release funds received, for a total of sixty-three thousand two and twenty-five dollars even for the month of May revenue. In the code enforcement side, we issued four residential licenses and sixteen building permits. The May review consisted of one thousand three hundred cents by dollars for commercial fees, four hundred dollars for rental license fees, two thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents for building permit fees, twenty-five dollars for sign permits, five hundred and five dollars for municipal fraction fees, for a total of three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents for the code portion of May revenue. I will give an update on the, our gun violence we have over in Willland Springs area.
Excuse me, just before you go into that, you had one missing person.
I didn't have one missing person. I completely got person and good return.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Sorry about that.
So today, at approximately four thirty, the guns crimes unit was doing a patrol of Willland Springs area, helping us backfill with our patrols in the area. So far, I know that everyone knows a lot of marked units up there today around that time. There were two individuals who were taken into custody, who are being, I believe, they'll be charged with carrying firearms on them. And also, there's also a pending search warrant on the unit that's being right now. If it's connection with the current land violence, it's to be undetermined right now, so they'll be looked into right now. That's what's going on. I know we had a lot of residents calling asking about a lot of the traffic that happens with police officers that's going on right now as we speak in that area.
It's the county police.
The special gun, yes, they handle any crimes that's related to grab guns.
Okay. Anything else? So, so are we going to just, I know we put a statement out about the incident last week. Did you have, I know there's still an investigation. Is there anything that you could at least say?
Not really. It's still, it's still a very active, like, really active investigation. Talked to the major, major crimes about once a week, or text, text communication. Not updating anything that's going on. So detectives are working the case really hard. Like I said, they're coming out and going, you know, stops with us and everything. So right now, we don't have anything to update on that yet.
Okay. So any questions, concerns?
Yes, question.
You first.
No, you go ahead, Commissioner, I can.
Oh, thank you. So one thing I would, I would like to say is, you know, my condolences, you know, to the family. You know, it was a really tough week around Willland Springs. And, you know, we talk about unity so much on this commission, and, and it really disappoints me how, how these commissioners act, you know?
Excuse me?
Nope, I'm gonna finish. So this raises the. So this residents need to hear this. So, you know, that Friday, not only did I arrive to my apartment right after it happened and help put up the caution tape, I found out later on that it was a whole press conference right outside my apartment complex and I wasn't even invited. So, you know, that's, that's really sad to me that these folks talk about unity and togetherness and they disrespect me like that, you know, in front of my apartment complex where I live and my mother stayed. My daughter was sitting outside when I pulled up. And, you know, it's like you guys don't even care about people, you know, to give them at least an update and say, hey, Commissioner Tillman, come out front. I had to watch it on the news, you know, and residents had to call me and tell me that the mayor and the vice mayor on Fox 5 and all these news channels during a press conference and not one call or text to say, hey, Commissioner, come outside. So, you know, that's really, it really disappoints me how we talk about all this, we, we working together and moving forward. We're not moving nowhere. We're not moving nowhere. We're not going up, we're going, and, and, you know, past administrations, I'm gonna say this because we talk about how bad past administrations is, but we're doing the same thing. You know, we're, 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 I literally walked out, you know, Friday before that, it was a shooting on the basketball court. You know, some guy shot a gun up in the air. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not crime, it's not just in, in Woodland Springs, it's throughout the whole county. So, you know, I, I want to say that we need to do better, you know? One thing that I never see on our website is information about our cops and officers, like who they are. We have, you know, there's no crime statistics, there's no information to find the crime or nothing. You know, our website is just boring. We don't even know, I, I literally was on a street corner and one police just rolled past me. And I'm gonna finish, can I finish? Thank you.
So you're going, you're going for one subject.
I'm flipping around.
And you're flipping around.
Yes, absolutely, because I don't have three minutes. I'm gonna say that, I don't have three minutes to speak, so I'm going to finish what I'm saying, thank you. So as I was saying, you know, one thing that, and I met with David and I talked to him and, you know, I'm gonna tone it down a little bit.
Yeah, you need to.
Thank you.
Because it's not a good look, it really isn't.
Well, good, well, it's not a good look for you guys either. It's not a good look for the commission to treat someone like that. Because you keep talking about unity, but it's a whole crime right out front of my door and you do a whole press conference and don't even call nobody. Talking about mental health issue, that's, that's a whole issue of itself.
I would say that.
Well, I would say that, I would say that you need to do better. The commission needs to do better.
You lived there, right, and you saw what happened, why would you leave?
Well, I didn't leave, I was in the house.
Why would you leave?
You, you didn't even tell me you was coming.
So if you're out there.
How do I leave, I didn't, how do I leave somewhere I live at?
So I'm just saying, just keep in order, you can't blame anybody.
I, I can't blame you guys for not texting. And then it's, I saw Commissioner Jennifer at the school and she didn't even know about it. We literally had the elementary school event and she didn't even know about the press conference. So she don't, she don't know either.
We're gonna move on.
So we're not gonna move on. But I, I will say to you this, Chief, in closing, you guys are doing a good job. You know, I appreciate the presence and, and I appreciate your communication to me. You know, because you, you did, you know, come to me that day and, and tell me what was going on. So I appreciate you and your officers for, for that day. And that, and, and you and your officers only for that day. Thank you.
We're gonna take a moment of silence real quick because this is not how I want to run my meetings. And I am not going to go back and forth with a issue that should not even been talked about.
I don't talk about what I want.
So, so.
I don't know what you're talking about, I can say what I want. That's, residents need to hear that, that a whole commissioner was in a virtual press conference in his neighborhood.
Commissioner Tillman, I'm talking, I'm talking.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, Commissioner Tillman.
Don't say nothing to me.
Can we have some respect for one another up here?
First of all, don't say nothing to me.
So can we be respectful?
You didn't invite nobody either.
Can we be respectful of one another here while we sit up here publicly on a meeting?
Yes, I will.
Let's respect one another. If we don't respect one another privately, let's at least try to do it publicly.
I will not say nothing else the rest of the night, thank you.
Let's be respectful.
Did you want to add to whatever that was? Chief, okay, any, any questions? Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, you have a question?
I do, and I, and if you can stay here, Chief Tarpley, I'd just like to add, that was very helpful with Commissioner Tillman. I'd like to segue on that. And it's important that our residents see how we're commissioners, we represent this city. And we are, as elected officials, supposed to hold ourselves with a certain sense of decorum. And if anything, you have the right to be, to be represented in a certain way. When I pulled up on the scene, I saw Commissioner Tillman leaving, leaving. This was a, a shooting where a 14-year-old young woman, young girl was shot and he was leaving. Chief Tarpley was there, did you see Commissioner Tillman on the scene? He left, he was not in his apartment. So he knew there was a shooting there. I spent several hours on that scene. And so I want to just say first off, first of all, my heart goes out to the residents on that, on that scene. Mayor Miller was there. I had no idea that there was going to be a press conference. I didn't know there was going to be a press conference. I was there talking to the residents, I was talking to management. The residents were coming up to me, sharing their concerns with me. And I'd like to just say to the residents, I appreciate them coming to me, acknowledging their concerns privately. Some of them talking to me because they were fearful, fearful of certain elected officials, where some of these things are actually coming from warrants that have been served, bringing people out that are associated with some of this very crime that they're experiencing on that property. And I'd also like to acknowledge the current, the concerns of several residents that shared that a certain elected official reporting to live at Woodland Springs does not live there. Further, there is no record of their residency with management. So I have assured them that their, their concerns are noted, valid, and that I have lodged them with the city attorney and that we will be filing something formally with the Ethics Commission. So these are, these types of acts and tricks and stunts and these types of behaviors, this is theater. This is all theater. And I'm not going to scream and holler with this because we live here, all of us can prove it. There is no record of this elected official who is purporting to say that they live here. A grown elected official who purports to say that they live with their.
He can say this, right? He can say all this, right? Is that what I'm saying? Is that, he can say all this? Is that what you're saying? He's talking, okay.
He did not speak.
Hey, okay, he can say all that, okay, okay. Go ahead, okay.
You laid the groundwork.
No, go ahead.
Commissioner Tillman.
Let him finish speaking. Everybody gave you a chance to speak, let him finish.
So I pay taxes in this city. I own a home in this city. I've invested in this city and I can prove it. All of these commissioners up here can prove it, we have skin in the gang. And one of these things is not like the other. And so we can get up here and scream and shout and all of these things and all I say is if you live here, prove it. And that's easy to do. But no one, no one told, I saw with my own eyes a commissioner leaving the scene of three people that had been shot who purports to live there and says that no one invited them? Why would you leave if your neighbors were shot and you live there? Why would you leave? It didn't have anything to do with a press conference. If my neighbor, and they were, my neighbors were shot, a 14-year-old young girl was shot. I wasn't there to be in front of a camera, I was there to support my neighbors. And I was angry because of the violence. I wasn't there for a photo op. I couldn't even get my words together. So it didn't have anything to do with being there to be on the camera. It had everything to do to let that community know that we were there to support them. I didn't slink away to do anything. And to lie and say that someone was in an apartment when all of that was going on is disingenuous at best. It's not true. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor Miller, may I?
Sure, Commissioner Gomez.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would like to bring the focus back to the victims of this crime.
Thank you.
And their families there, number one, first and foremost. I like to express my condolences to everyone who was affected by this senseless violence in our community. You know, a few people can terrorize a, a community where everyone is feeling unsafe to even go outside. And that's very unfortunate and something that I really think that we need to look at changing in an effort to talk about how we can move forward. This is a continuous conversation that we've had around management at Woodland Springs and their responsiveness to work with the city, work with us to come up with some proper and appropriate security measures. Time and time again, we have these out-of-state management firms who purchase Woodland Springs. They don't live here, they're HUD financed, but yet anything that happens, they never want to put any security procedures in place that could possibly prevent this from happening over and over again. I know that we have already started to reach out again to management at Woodland Springs to restart that conversation. I know that it's going to take an effort from us, the residents in Woodland Springs as well, to put pressure on HUD, who can also put pressure on the management company so that we can see some changes. There are a number of security measures that are not just hiring private security that Woodland Springs can take. For instance, if they wanted to monitor the parking of who's going to be coming in and out of that space, right? There's so many entrances and exits and virtually anyone can park there, they have no parking permitting. That is a simple preventative measure that we can take. So at this point, I am really calling us as a commission to come together and find the way that we can exert some friendly pressure on this management company to really follow up with what they should be doing with the responsibilities that they have to the families that live in that community.
Thank you, Commissioner Gomez. Any other comments? Commissioner Jennifer, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to extend my heartfelt condolences to the entire Woodland Springs community. On that day, did not change the spirit of those residents over there because the incident happened and then that following Tuesday was the food giveaway at Woodland Springs and the people came out. So, you know, that unfortunate event did not stop the people from still doing the things that they enjoy doing. And it was, it was incredible to see all of the cars and thank you, Chief, for, for being out there for your support. It gave, gave the residents a lot of comfort to have you out there on that day. With regards to the press release, I mean, the press event, I will say that we are a commission. We are linked together, good or bad. And what we try to do is divide and conquer. We cannot all be at every event that occurs in this city. And so I was happy that while Vice Mayor and Mayor were able to go out and do this press event that was totally, they were unaware of that the cameras were going to be there. I was, I was pleased that I was able to be there to support District Heights Elementary along with Commissioner Tillman. And it was, it was incredible. And it meant a lot to that, those students there that had worked very, very hard to, to do that performance and it was, it was, it was really incredible. So I understand that we cannot all be there at the same place in the, in the same time, but I think, I believe we were very well represented on that day after that horrific tragedy with Chief Tarpley, Mayor Miller, and Vice Mayor Harcourt there.
And Chief, sorry, one more question, quick question. Is it correct that you contact each of us anytime there's any violence that happens in the city?
Yeah, I try to, I try to within the first 30 minutes or so. Just wanted to send out a quick email blast text.
Yes.
To let you all know exactly what's going on in case you get the calls. If they have a very quick, short little summary of what's going on.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Actually, I was outside, I was wiping down my car and I kept hearing helicopters just kept hovering around for a long time. And so when I heard the ding on my phone and then that's when I saw the chief's text and I called him and he told me, you know, really what happened and I immediately jumped in the shower and, and came over because when I first became Commissioner in 2014, you know, Ward 1 is my ward, so Woodland Springs is where I spent a lot of time. And so I was concerned and, and my heart goes out to the victims, but also those are my friends over there, you know? And I was going to check on and make sure everybody was okay. And then when we got there, we heard about that they were setting up to do the press conference. So no, I wasn't going over there to do a press conference, I was checking on my friends and my residents over there in Woodland Springs. Chief Tarpley.
Yeah, so actually, that event's a little different, you know, that level of crime, I believe actually colleagues wanted you that day. Commissioner Tillman actually turned around and we were standing right behind you, so there's no need to call you, so I would talk to you face to face about what's going on. Moving forward, we learned, now that we have Ms. Bethia on board, I've kind of learned kind of more ways to communicate. So now just to follow my show is we have put some spell sticks in place about communication. Commissioner Tillman, Commissioner Jennifer, Commissioner Gomez, I apologize, I'll take the fault for that, that you may not have been notified if something's going on. It just was a lot of things moved at the time. From now on, we'll work with Ms. Bethia to make sure that that won't happen again. If, you know, that serious incident is happening in the city, you all will be notified, myself or through Ms. Bethia. And also if there is going to be some point where we're going to have to do some news conference, that way you will be notified, you know, from the Communications Department, Ms. Bethia, so to give you the opportunity if you would like to come participate or if you guys would like to have one person speak on the air.
Yeah, everything happened so fast and you were the lead on giving the report. So then you had to confer with Ms. Bethia on what to say and what not to say. And so you had to be prepared right away. We had a chance to kind of think about and, you know, she kind of coached us on what to say and what not to say. But everything just happened so fast and you had to be ready and you did an amazing job.
Well, I can see that.
Of course.
She was actually right on seeing with me, but again, we're learning. That was, that was one of our large incidents, I think it was the first time since I've been chief we had a triple shooting like that. So horrific. But we kind of learn from our mistakes and try to do better for the next time.
Yes, thank you for that. Did you have anything else to report on?
No, that's it.
That's it? Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Family and Youth Services Katrina Emerson, YSB Director. You're excited, you must have some really good information. Okay, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, Vice Mayor Harcourt, Misses Gomez, Tillman, Jennifer, and city residents and other city leadership. Please accept my report as it is written. I just want to kind of highlight and first apologize for my evenings because today was the last day of our parent support group. And so they had a closing ceremony for the parents that had completed, so they had been with us for nine months doing a cohort, so it was 17 altogether, parents and children working together.
That's nice.
Nice.
That's nice.
So, and the children are, you've seen them in our other programming, family engagement activities, they usually double over and end up in those categories. I'll highlight just a few. I'll highlight, um, just a few things before I talk a little bit about Juneteenth. I know there's a lot of people for that, so I'm going to do a little bit more information about that. Um, on Friday, May the third, um, our new YSB staff member Melissa Smith, um, she hosted an information table for the children's mental health matters come out in pavement at total of ice break. Uh, and that was actually two days after she started working. So we're really happy that she's with us. On Friday, May the tenth, the YSB, we hosted our final family engagement event for the fiscal year. Um, this, we utilized poetry with Sister Joy Alfred, uh, Alfred. She was a First Georgia County poet laureate, um, until twenty twenty-three. So she facilitated the sessions to guide participants in tapping into their inner poet, um, using language to be able to convey thoughts, feelings, and emotions. And we usually talk about journaling when it comes to therapeutic processes. And poetry is a great way for kids to express themselves without exposing themselves, um, to criticism. Um, and then our last one, of course, YSB hosted our bi-monthly parent support group, which actually, like I said, closed today. But I do want to know, I want to thank you for the opportunity. Um, in David's absence of being acting city manager, partner, and chief, I learned a lot.
Yes, not.
And I commend him for the work that he does to the city. And, um, I'd like to, you know, have right back in the YSB. But it it is a great opportunity to learn how much the city is doing on a day-to-day basis and how how we're so involved with different meetings in the community and coming and contacting different people and how we are serving and how we can serve better. So I truly appreciate that opportunity. But I am also thankful that the opportunity has passed. What I did not mention in the report, but I have been talking with David in regards to, uh, program development for the YSB. So we did have a former clinician. She is now working with Montgomery County, but she is working on her PhD. So part of her dissertation process is doing program development in the communities. And that's many well of the ball.
Oh, yeah.
And so she is doing program development for us for elementary, middle, and high school groups, um, based on some of the issues that we are seeing. So doing it at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. So with the elementary groups, it's, uh, building healthy relationships, which that's already taking place with the group of Tanner, Tanner Reed and Taylor with the, uh, Woodland, I don't know what it is. District Heights Elementary School, I apologize. And then also working with middle school groups, uh, increasing social skills to increase their window of tolerance so that you can see a decrease in impulsive behaviors and of course, dealing with anxiety and depression with our high school-based students.
That's awesome.
On another note for the YF, registration is open for the My Soul Goes Fly K Run Walk. So please, please, please put your teams together. It is our biggest fundraiser, occasionally, always the third Saturday in September. So it'll be September twenty-first, it is a rain or shine event. Um, we are partnering with, uh, this should be that, so that is a race timed company. But they also helped us last year in supporting and putting the race together for us because our staff is kind of small, but they bring their team and we work with volunteers to make sure that that takes place.
Are you going to be recruiting at Juneteenth?
Oh, oh, yes, absolutely.
And and all the other events that we have.
Yes, absolutely. We have learned, um, from District Heights Day that having a city suite is paramount to the work that we do. And it allows all of our departments to come together and be in one location. And so everybody's information gets passed around and gets given to the residents in a way that they see not only just the tables, but they see staff from all departments. And so it it was just very positive and we got a lot of good feedback.
That's good, that's good.
But sort of peace, safe resistance on my watch is the Juneteenth Freedom Walking Festival. We have less than fourteen days before this event takes place. Um, I'm guessing you guys, the flyers haven't been given out, of course, uh, Lakeisha's talked about the volunteers. Uh, so we are working with the public affairs email, but we're also getting calls, we're receiving calls. We've sent it out to the schools, all schools in First Georgia County to say, hey, we need volunteers, youth and adult volunteers. We need adult volunteers eighteen and above for the voter registration. So we have been receiving feedback from that, from our sororities and our fraternities. So some of them are already certified to be voter registration volunteers.
Great, great.
So that's a wonderful thing. Uh, we will send out an email for, uh, voter registration volunteers, some that were already on the list. But if you would like to register to become a volunteer, we are doing a training session on June the fifteenth. It will be at one P M. and then we'll have another one at five P M. The sessions are virtual and so it's a ninety-minute session. So make sure that you do have time for that ninety minutes. And once we get your information, we'll send out all of the pre-packet information for those voters, uh, for the voter registration volunteers, excuse me. And in doing so, then you will have to go down to First Georgia County Board of Elections by the eighteen to be registered so that you can be certified to help with the voter registration. So we will make sure that information goes out as well.
Okay, good.
So again, the volunteers need it, like she said, June eighth, fifteenth, and nineteenth. So I do have the flyer, so I'm going to give these, this information to you. And yes, it is going on the website. I'm going to say thank you to Ms. Bethia, I'm saying it right, yes ma'am? We did receive some, some of our swag that's coming through for this event. So it is very, very exciting to see them come down in real time. So it's from that.
Yeah.
Excuse you, John Hines.
Thank you. So how are we, um, are we allowing people to park in the parking lot and what?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not doing the shuttles?
Well, we are doing, uh, we, with some of our community partnerships, of course, with the Department of District Heights, uh, they're working with the system with shelling, uh, in the front of the area of District Heights parking lot of the church. And then they'll shuttle us up to St. Paul's and then we'll walk down through Freedom Walk into the field.
Okay.
That way your cars are here, so you're not up at St. Paul's.
Right.
Come back to your car.
Great idea.
So we are working, um, with all of the leadership team. Everybody's doing their part. We are excited, we are just happy. Everybody has their skills, their tools, and so whatever everybody brings to the table, we are utilizing. We are, we are very, very happy with this. So everybody feels that they are in a good place as of yesterday's meeting. I'm still a little stressed, but, you know. But we, we are excited, um, the feedback that we're getting, uh, at the state county levels for the invited guests that we have and just community members and participants that'll be a part of the program itself, but also voter registration. Everybody is very positive and very supportive. And it is just, we're excited, they're excited, but it makes us more excited when we talk to them, we have the conversation. So we're excited to see this come to fruition.
Uh, could you just make sure we get email versions as well? Yes, that would be great.
So the final version, once we have the run show confirmed tomorrow, then we'll have it all go out.
Okay. Well, I'm excited. This is our first one that we're actually claiming. So, so I'm excited. Any questions from the, uh, Commission regarding, uh, her report or the Juneteenth event? Any questions? Or you need to add?
Just one question, I mean, one comment. Thank you for saving the trees. You did, you double-sided it, thank you.
Okay, any, anyone else? Okay, I think you're done. Thank you so much.
One thing I have to add. We are still hiring for clinicians. It's not that we're hiring, we're interviewing them.
Okay.
So that is taking place. We're getting, you know, the momentum is kicking up now, so we're getting candidates. We're just waiting for them to make sure that they are licensed. Uh, the challenge is that people graduate and they want a job and it's great. But in the state of Maryland, to be a L M S W licensed, uh, master social worker, you have to be licensed or you have to be under supervision to be licensed, just as we have with Tanner Reed. But for, uh, counselors, you have to have your LGPC at minimum because you cannot see clients without that. So that is a big screening process for us as the YSB is that since we are monitored by the state and also by the county, we cannot have any black work for us that is not licensed. So many are graduating in May, they should be licensed in the next two, two to three months. And so we are in the process, but we are actively, we should be in the process.
Okay. Could you tell the residents that Melissa came back?
Yes, okay, so Melissa Smith, she was our executive admin for the YSB. I want to say from twenty seventeen up to, what's it, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. She probably left us probably right before the pandemic. Uh, but she has returned. She is a Woodland Springs resident. She does live in the city of District Heights. She is probably one of the best supporters that you have for the YSB. If you need it, she got it. If you have questions about it, she'll find it out for you. But she has been very supportive to the city. She has, uh, picked up with Juneteenth and helping out and supporting in the way that she can, which has been very, very helpful for us as a staff and then also as a city.
That's great, great. Thank you Katrina Emerson. Appreciate it. Okay, number eight, Department of Public Works Service Plan, Lakeisha Washington, Public Works.
Wanted to kind of give a little bit of an introduction to what the Public Works Department does and what it can provide. So that is the purpose of this action item. Um, so just to quickly briefly do everything from limb collection to snow removal, um, a lot of community engagement. And we try to prioritize the needs, um, with holding the highest standards along with our fiscal responsibilities and environmental stewardship. Um, number one is leaf collection. During the fall season, we initiate the leaf collection program to remove all leaves. Um, same thing with limb collection. Limb collection is one year, um, and it's all year round. This ensures a prompt collection of disposable tree limbs and branches. We also do snow removal, um, that speaks within itself too. Snow removal usually happens during the wintertime. Um, seating and landscaping of city green spaces during this is the spring season usually. Um, and these are a couple of places that we highlighted. However, we also discuss going throughout the entire city and doing seating and things like that of that nature. So although it's just, um, the municipal grounds, that's the parts of these, the other gardens, we will be, uh, over canvassing the entire area. Cause we do have a lot of one-off green spaces too as well. Um, striping and paving of the previous surfaces. This usually happens throughout the summer too. If you notice some of the signs and things that we've already been replacing, um, along with some of the stop sign re, uh, going back over and repainting the lines and things of that nature also take place during the summertime as well. Um, building and facility maintenance will be an ongoing throughout the year maintenance, uh, plan. So that would be like on a regular, regular schedule. Um, that's number, okay, street sweeping, I'm sorry, got to go over to the other page. Uh, it's scheduled, uh, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So we do Mondays and Fridays technically. Um, and right now, and that's usually after trash collection and pre, I mean, trash collection is conducted. And we also have one additional day, which we throw in and monitor, um, throughout the city as well. We have the solid waste collection and recycling. This is also year-round, but this is contracted out. These services are contracted out. Um, the tree and limb program management, um, which is also contracted out. We oversee the maintenance and removal of like any city-owned trees and conducting more regular inspections and assessments, um, throughout the city as well. Community engagement outreach, um, this is through with our community outreach events and meetings and online platforms. We tend to prioritize those. We provide educational resources, um, on DPW services, sort of like what we talked about with the Foxes and giving those kind of notations and things about things that we can do of that nature. And also sus, you know, providing sustainable plants, uh, practices, sort of like a base species removal that we did as well. Um, budget management and fiscal accountability. We would like to, we're going to monitor our departmental budget allocation and expenditures, um, throughout the fiscal year. We implement cost-saving measures too as well. And efficient, um, efficient improvements while maintaining transparency and accountability in budget management practices. And I'll go into a little bit more detail as part of the allocation of things due shortly. Continuous improvement and adaptation. Um, foster agriculture innovation and continuous improvement is something that, um, we hold to the highest standard. We want to make sure that our service delivery and our adaptive plans for our ad hoc issues are also being addressed to as well. Um, appropriate effort in contractual services. I, like I mentioned before, street paving, tree removal, solid waste collection, and landscaping services are all contracted services that are out. However, we are in the process of terminating landscaping contracts, depending, um, with the, how everything goes with our evaluation of our master landscaper. Um, and that's pretty much the conclusion of that plan. Uh, if you would like, I can go into further detail, further detail.
Any questions from the Commission? David, you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is the first, you know, if you start digging into the attachment, this is the first real look of both the definition of services that Public Works offers and how they provide those services. So the interrelation here is the service plan is the bedrock for operations. And then the Commission, after approving and reviewing and editing and and amending the service plan, has the opportunity on an annual basis to adjust it through the annual budget process. And so, you know, really what we're asking is, here's, here's the services that we think Public Works delivers. Here's how often, how frequently, and with what resources we think Public Works delivers those services with. Is this right, yes or no? Here are the metrics we are tracking, here's what we've got available, and here's where we're focused. And so what this does is backs us into a more holistic view of both performance management and future budget planning.
Um, I would like to also add, if you, if we go into further into the attachment, that will cover, like you said, the introduction, the frozen responsibilities, the DPW fiscal year plan, the day-to-day operations, um, position descriptions and responsibilities. It covers the budget so, uh, certainly along with the code of conduct, well, not really the code of conduct, but it does include that chain of command and, you know, certifications and trainings. So, uh, I wanted to take a holistic approach and review that the entire department, not just about, uh, the representative services that we execute for our residents, but also how we operate, um, holistically within the department and how the, how our efforts affect other departments and what does that look like too as well.
Sure, Commissioner Gomez.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. And I know we've, uh, chatted offline about some of these additions, but I'd like for us to add, um, within the service plan categories, um, a category for wayfinding, so any, um, streets that, I mean, excuse me, uh, signs that we need to be replaced or things that need to be added. That's something that definitely falls under DPW. Um, under the seating and the landscaping of the city green spaces, although we've highlighted what the key focus areas are, I'd like for us to include that we'll, we'll also be covering the city's rite of ways. So all the patches of green space that are in our pathways, um, on our intersections, et cetera, should also be included in this list. Um, I think we also need to have a category for sort of the ad hoc, uh, projects that sort of come up, right? So like, for instance, when we had the, uh, auto accident, uh, maybe about two years ago, we installed a guardrail. Um, yeah, as well. Or like if streetlights are out, like things that'll, that'll recur just based on environment. Um, I think we could add something like that. I'd also like us to consider, and this is sort of, I think this would be cross-cutting across a few of these items, but, um, having, uh, stormwater management included in the service plan as well. Um, and although that's not something that we currently have a focus on, it's something that we know we will need to focus on as the climate continues to change. Um, we already experienced a lot of flooding. And I think we could also add maybe to and to the, the tree and limb program, I think we should add, well, you, we have it here, pruning and removing trees, planting needs, okay, so we have that. Under the, um, number seven, the street sweeping.
Yes.
If we could also add general litter cleanup and trash cleanup. Uh, sometimes, you know, people dump unfortunately and and Public Works has to come and clean that up as well. I think those were all of my comments on the service plan.
Stormwater maintenance, um, added wayfinding, also added rite of way. Just make sure I got all the notes. Ad hoc circumstances as well, under street sweeping, provided litter removal. And I think that's, yeah, that's it for all the notes.
And stormwater management?
And stormwater management, yes.
Okay.
Stormwater maintenance, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I do.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Under community engagement and outreach, Public Works, uh, really is the backbone in supporting a lot of our other departments. So I think, um, I'm just looking at a way to tie these, to tie these together. When we do the community engagement and outreach, I always see that we don't really like go it alone. Um, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm Yeah, if I'm interpreting, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
If I'm interpreting what you're saying, Vice Mayor, there's not only an external element in Public Works' service delivery, but there's also an internal service delivery element to support other departments, whether it be the physical plant, space management, and things like that. And so that's something we can absolutely go back and clearly delineate in the service plan.
And then we have the city events versus social events. Any other additions or questions or concerns from the commission? Put a lot of work in there. So, I mean, I see a motion here to approve.
We approved the phase.
I think, I believe Ms. Washington has more to report on.
Report on, you have more to report on?
More to report on in reference to the service plan. Or in reference, I also have the other talking point in reference to the extension of the playground. I'm not sure if you wanted to talk about that first or?
Well, we voted on the consent, is in the consent agenda, but if you could just give a brief update, at least for the residents, to why we were talking about the extension.
Okay, so the extension of the playground that is, the playground that we opened up to the left at the top part here, with parts and rest was in great support of the contract in hand yet. The second portion will be phase two. Phase two is adding the slide, the transition slide from the top of the playground to the bottom of the playground. We're discussing that because we're giving the, we want to extend that same contract, have that same company come out and to add the second part of the extension.
So we felt that there was another part of equipment that the residents, they would need, okay.
To make it more cohesive.
Okay.
It was a part of the plan. I'll let David drive.
We amended it, so this is a discussion that began with recreation and sort of evolved to Public Works. And so there's two distinct upper play areas. There are the swings as well as the playground itself. One of the sort of recurring issues is that there's a rather large embankment, a steep slope between the two that separates the play areas. Kids often run between both play areas, and, you know, Mr. Taylor and I, early on, thought it would be a good idea if we could somehow integrate the two play areas together. And so when Ms. Washington arrived, one of the tasks that landed in her plate was going back to Playground Specialist, who's the vendor we awarded the original contract to, to see if there was a way we could integrate a new play feature into that hill to connect the playground. And so essentially, this effectuates that. It's a kind of a mixed slide and regrading of the hill so that it's a more cohesive play space.
Where we're transitioning on that safety too as well.
And so the costs on that, the additional costs?
The current cost is $25,780. However, we're looking for 30K, which allows a 44,000 contingency, just in case anything was to arise between that, to arise in order for the 44,000.
The funding source is unallocated ARBA funds. And so you recall earlier, a couple months ago, when the commission considered the ARBA spending plan, we rescoped the bathroom projects. That left about $100,000 or so of unallocated funding. This is one of the projects that we had sitting that, you know, we were looking for funding in future years, but it makes sense to accelerate because we still have the relation, the direct line to Playground Specialist who did the original installation.
Right. Okay.
I have another.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Gomez?
Yes. On the position descriptions and responsibilities under the assistant director responsibilities, it says manage labors and assign tasks based on priority and workload. Would the assistant manager be managing labors or would that be, or, excuse me, would they be assigning tasks to the labors or the two crew leads? Okay.
So it goes from director, assistant director, she mainly works with, Ms. Johnson works with them on a daily basis, daily basis, based on what we discussed too, as far as all of our services that we're executing and what are the current tasks that we, so she'll be working directly with giving the task and things to execute. I like it to kind of come from one voice to help with cohesion.
Yes, so can we just edit that bullet so it's clear that the assistant director is managing the two crew leads and not managing all labors? So that's just clearly defined? And I know that we have the, I know that we have the, we've included the organizational structure, which I would call maybe like our community organizational structure, but can we also add the departments or chart here as well?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. All right, there's no questions.
So are we adopting this based on the amendments or changes? Oh, I'm sorry. My hero is in the mic.
I just wanted to ask about the playground. So from start to finish, how long do you, once it's all approved, the project to last?
All right, so the project, actually, we're going to do it in the fall. The summertime, we weren't able to actually get on the early summer schedule. The park and playground will probably be down for about two weeks if that. What they're trying to do is going to crunch that work over the week, not over the weekend, but during normal business hours to try to see if we can execute that. So it doesn't really have to be back and up. Like the fall was a great transition time, and I'm trying to, I would like to actually get it aligned with closer to the winter, so maybe at late fall, so that way it's less traffic. But I will have a definite answer for you as far as the timeline. Once this project is approved and we can start on the plan, I'll make sure that I share that plan with you of execution and delivery schedule, what that looks like.
Yeah, it's going to be a great addition to the playground.
Yeah, I'm excited.
And I'm looking forward to sliding down that slide there as well.
Trust me, I can't wait to, I'm excited. Trust me, I was supposed to sleep with another kid, but it was pretty awesome over there. The cushions are down, the distance pads for the kids, it's awesome playground.
Yeah, I think the fall would probably be better.
Yeah.
Because this is our first summer of having the new playground.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why, yeah, yeah. So that's why we said that actually made sense to do it that way.
Yeah, you had a question, Vice Mayor?
I do have a question. Long-term, are there any, any long-term talks about maybe replacing that gazebo over there? I know, I know Commissioner Blake and I, we've talked about that a lot. We actually sat over there a lot and talked. She always talked about wanting to replace that.
And if you'll allow me, there are a couple of options that we're exploring, both with Public Works and with Recreation, for improved pavilion space and functional outdoor space. One of the side conversations or scoping exercises we've had with Playground Specialists is looking at also bringing them back to update that. The concern I have there partially is that it's, you know, it's right up on a neighbor's property. And so I have, you know, some reservations about increasing the scale of that. But what we have been doing with Recreation is looking for options for additional flexible outdoor space that is covered, shielded from the sun, and available to people to come, gather, and recreate in. And so we've looked at a couple of pad pavilion options. We've looked at a couple of canvas covering options that could land elsewhere on the municipal center grounds. So that'll probably come back to you at some point in the next six months with recommendations and options.
And, you know, it just came to mind, the outdoor restrooms.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that's another thing that we're looking into as well.
Am I saying it? So we are at a point in both of our open construction projects, so Fiesta Place and the Senior Center, where we can start moving the next slate of projects to the active pile. There are two projects that are getting ready to come onto the active pile. One of them is the updates to Veterans Park. The second is the municipal center restroom project. And so the Senior Center is awfully close to being closed out. We are under temporary occupancy. I expect us to have, I haven't connected with our construction manager, but permanent occupancy in hand, if not now, in the coming days, which really limits the type of closeout that we have left. And so you've got an update on Fiesta Place earlier. We're comfortable enough with where both of those projects are to where we can take on more. So those are the next two projects that are teed up.
But I'm looking into those back.
Okay, okay, all right. Any other, you have another question, Commissioner Jennifer?
And I wanted to just segue into Commissioner, Vice Mayor Harcourt's question about the pavilion gazebo. And because it is so close to the property of the homeowner, has there been any discussion about maybe putting some type of fencing or something to show some distinction between city property and personal private property?
That's also been a running conver, I'm sorry, running conversation with Lakeisha, Ms. Washington, myself, and Mr. Taylor about screening it perhaps with evergreens. You know, we are somewhat hesitant to build a fence larger than what exists, but we can use the built environment to help screen it. And so that's been the running conversation for the last couple of months as well.
Do we have any problems with lawdering over there at all? Do you think?
Not since the new cameras were installed.
Okay.
They, so, and the workers had the trees cut back to be able to see that, so not since they, and the new camera, not since those two things take place.
Okay.
One more, this is the Friday one.
No.
And new lighting.
And new lighting, okay, thank you.
I was just thinking, I know that Vice Mayor and Commissioner Gomez have been working very closely with, oh, I can't recall the name of the company that provided trees. And I don't, thank you, Vice Mayor, and I don't know whether or not they might be helpful in maybe providing some, something free, no cost to the.
Our next, our next round of, in our tree planting initiative, is coming through, I can't recall, I think it's Prince George's County Department of the Environment. They have a Trees in the Public Right-of-Way Program or Trees on Public Property Program. We are queued up for somewhere toward the end of this calendar year or early next calendar year. We're looking at leveraging that program for some of our needs around this campus.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Okay. If there aren't any other questions or concerned, could I get a motion if you're ready to approve the public works service plan as provided with amendments, right?
Yes. Commissioner Gomez moved that the city commission approve the public works service plan as provided in Attachment One and amended by the commission during the June 6, 2024 city meeting.
Could I get a second?
Vice Mayor Harcourt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. Okay, thank you. You had something else you wanted?
Thank you.
So item nine is the facility use and rental policy, Jeffrey Taylor.
So as the commission is aware, we have had a series of discussions about policy points that the commission wishes to see implemented in our facility use program. So what this item does is, in the discussion section, takes those top, those issues by topic and provides potential policy language for the commission's review. The purpose in doing it this way is to ensure, you know, because of the length of discussion and the amount of open issues, that the policy language matches exactly with the commission's expectations. So throughout the item, we cover topics from acceptable use, maximum occupancy, hours of availability, you know, so on and so forth. You know, when we originally started pulling this item together, we envisioned offering amendments to the existing policy, but kind of quickly found that we would really rather have a new policy. And so what'll happen is, we're gonna, you know, you'll notice there's no draft motion in the packet. We're asking the commission for straw pulls on this discrete policy language, which we will then use to return to you with a complete policy on the 11th, so the next work session. And so, you know, I'm happy to walk through the specific issues and policy language, and Mr. Taylor is here to answer any kind of detail or operational questions you may have.
Any questions from the commission?
I do.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to know, have we closed the loop on how the monies will be transacted?
Yes. And so Mr. Taylor today delivered to me a transition plan, which runs about three weeks to transition to cashless payments and integration with a soft launch of rec desk.
Okay. Oh, okay.
And so that transition should be complete by July 15th, correct? So if it's the commission's pleasure, I can go language point by language point?
Sure, sure, that would be helpful.
The first point of discussion that the commission had was acceptable uses. And so the commission basically spent a good amount of time discussing the comparative merits of having a resident priority or a nonprofit priority or a non-resident priority and what that would look like in terms of allowable use of the facility. There wasn't a complete consensus, but we did put some language together that addresses that and sort of tweaks the level of staff review and due diligence that's done on each submission. So the first clarifies kind of simply that applications are taken on a first-come, first-served basis, that they must be complete to be considered. So as you kind of came out in the last discussion, staff was having to expend a lot of back-and-forth time getting complete information. And so that's a tweak there. We also changed how confirmations are dealt with. So previously, there was a deposit and follow-up model. This changes that to a prepayment model and gives the Recreation Department a clearer escalation for review in terms of policy and procedure. So the important part of that is the timeline. So that's the next step down, is that we are asking for at least 30 days' notice for a rental application, for a complete application. What that does is allows us to apply and have What that does is allows us to apply and have a comfortable amount of time to do due diligence on the organization, the event, and the other details surrounding the rental. And so I'm sure Mr. Taylor could share stories about, you know, some of the back and forth his staff has had to get some of these prior rentals across the finish line in an acceptable way. We heard also very clearly that the commission wants more staff to exercise more oversight and more due diligence on these. And so we need to build in time to allocate to that. Obviously, there are also instances where we may need to waive that. You know, civic functions like a wake or a repass are a good example. You don't always have 30 days out on that. And so there's a, there's an escalation and waiving process that goes with it. That is also in line with the types of uses that the commission had consensus around. It's a civic use. Waiving that timeline is not too terrible because the applicant will be associated with usually one of the community churches. We also heard the commission on application submissions too far out in advance. So the prior practice had been a year. We heard that that was too much. And so what we are looking at in the next language at the top of page two is, you know, a 60 to 90 day window that we don't want applications in advance of. The 60 to 90 day window really gives us the opportunity to do some pre-planning without booking the facilities out for the duration of the year, right? We're thinking specifically that window because we are doing more work, and Mr. Taylor can speak to this, with larger, more sophisticated organizations that are coming in to, you know, offer services to residents, but have a corporate booking schedule to deal with. And so we're in conversation with one now that has been a repeat guest of ours that I think that would apply to. We're not comfortable going out any further than 90 days and think that sweet spot is somewhere between 60 to 90. But it's, it's the commission's pleasure how early you want to start taking applications for further down in the year. So we would be looking for guidance on that. And I can either, I can either walk through the rest of the language options or stop for questions under that topic.
Any questions from the commission at this time?
I just have a comment, comment, quick comment.
Commissioner Tom.
Thank you for this. One thing that, that I do love is the facility inspection part of it. I think we had a long conversation about that. So, you know, I think, you know, having them inspected afterwards will help with, you know, just transferring over, make sure everything is clean and, you know, kind of settled at the end of that. And then, and then, you know, I love, I think, you know, for me personally, I think the 12 o'clock, 12 a.m., kind of be out there by 12 a.m. It's a lot, it's a lot better than 10:30 because you're kind of rushing them out. And, you know, people like Conga at the end of the events, you know, so kind of slowly get them out. That's just me personally, you know.
Any other questions from the commission?
One question.
Oh, sure, Commissioner Jennifer.
Thank you. For when individuals come to rent the facility, is there a deposit? For, for example, with the inspection, if you find that it is not up to par, is there a portion of that rental? Do we charge an additional fee that is not refundable in the case that we have an issue with how the, the facility is left after the event?
Yeah, yes. It's done now typically by chargeback. And so, for example, there was an instance a couple of years ago where there was some damage to a restroom that was caught in, you know, after the fact, and that was charged back to the renter. What we're, what we're suggesting a little further down in the item is a little bit of a different process whereby we are doing pre and post inspections. So not just a checklist, which is what we have now, but pre and post inspections that have to pass a certain bar for, A, the event to proceed, and B, for the event to close out. One of the things we are looking at is some, it's two things that the commission discussed, both potential cleaning fees in the event that the space is not restored to how it should have been, and potential for security deposits. Although, if the commission is looking at lower key events, resident rentals, nonprofits, you know, we may be able to drop the security requirement.
And they'll have insurance.
There's an insurance requirement.
Yes.
So that includes the restrooms for the inspection?
Yes. The next topic that the commission debated was how large do you want the events to be? You know, when staff did our analysis, the main space that's rented out is the gymnasium. And then there are kind of support areas that are tacked on to that, whether it be the kitchen for warming or, you know, the entryway for, you know, guest reception or whatever. And so, you know, the, the gym has a pretty large capacity. Recreation by practice has booked it under capacity, but the commission could set a, yeah, they could set a lower percentage of the maximum capacity to keep a throttle on the size of event, right? And so if, just saying, if the gym has a 400 person capacity, you could limit rentals, so non-public service events, to a reduced capacity that is a percentage of the overall room capacity.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Commissioner Gomez.
What's the current capacity for the gym?
446. But you guys can definitely set a new maximum for.
I thought the old agreement had 347 or something like that. Is that what?
That is the limitations that we put on.
Okay.
So we do that ourselves.
Okay.
There's space for a dance floor.
Oh, okay, okay.
And as a part of the due diligence, another thing that we can do is use that cap to then liaise with our partners in the Fire Marshal's Office to have something ready to go to say, yeah, the room's capped at 446, but this approval is for not more than 205.
Well, then as you think about line dancing, you need more room, right?
Yes, you do, a little bit more.
A little bit more, okay, okay. So that's something we have to think about.
Yes, very important.
All right, any other questions or comments from the commission?
I had one other comment. On the, the language that's drafted here on alcohol. So just following up on our last discussion, we did have a general agreement that we'd like to have a dry facility. And I know we've mentioned here alcohol, tobacco, illegal drugs are not permitted in the building. But I'd like for us to maybe also add no smoking or vaping on city grounds. You know, I just realized on District Heights Day, we had some, some folks out there smoking marijuana. And I don't think everyone is aware that although it's legal, if it's a no smoking area, it's still a no smoking area, so we can add that.
And Commissioner, you'll have the opportunity to address that because what we're coming back with is high level hours of operation and general rules for the facilities for large.
Okay.
Right? And so we're trying, we tailored this language specific to an outside party is using our facility. We're going to come back on the 11th with, and oh, by the way, here's what we, we want to take from this analysis and apply to all of our space.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The commission did discuss hours of operation discussion predominantly circled around the 10:30 and 12:00 a.m. times. What I did was offer up a few selections from College Park, Buick, Lenardon, and Hyattsville, who also do private and public facility rentals, just to give you a sense of what some other jurisdictions are doing. As we discussed in the prior meeting, you know, we're a little unique in that we do have a larger facility and have historically offered private social rentals. That is not necessarily the case. In most of these, they are typically a little more restrictive. So I just want to offer that caveat. When you're looking at the times, they're usually, you know, dedicated to a specific use within a very narrow confine of use.
Yeah, it seems like the Gold Room, because that's used for a lot of.
And the Gold Room is, is the one that hosts the social events.
Yes, yeah. So they say 8 p.m. or 12 a.m.
But also.
Oh, sure, that's right.
But also what's unique about us is these are not smack dab in the middle of a residential community. They're not embedded. The, our community, the municipal.
The Gold Room is.
Yeah, Gold Room is.
So what I'm saying is, ours is unique because it's one way in, one way out. And, you know, so I just want to say that our residents, really, this is very disruptive to our residents. So I'm not opposed to these events at all. But, you know, the compromise is I just don't, as a former law enforcement officer, I just don't think that these things is not good for us to be having these things going till, you know, nothing good happens at 12, 1:00, 2 o'clock in the morning, especially what we're dealing with right now. It just is not good.
I think we still should consider, well, we have time to think about this.
And what I, what I kind of glazed over in the beginning of the report is that the commission can limit by residency, can limit by organization type. So for example, nonprofit civic organization as opposed to a commercial entity. We can also limit the policy based off of that and would look toward commission guidance in that area. The item speaks to it a little bit later, but that was also a primary point of discussion on what's the appropriate limitation. We, we discussed inspections, but the inspection language is enhanced and kind of strengthened a bit. And not just a pre and post checklist, but that the facility is, is subject to inspection, you know, before and after event and any time during the event for compliance with the policy in terms of the agreement.
And we will still have the, the contract where the individual would have to have law enforcement based on their.
Yeah. That, there was, there was universal agreement on the commission about that. And so our intention was to retain the language. We also.
I'm sorry, so with that, and maybe Chief or Jeffrey could speak on this. So when people are leaving the event, do I, do our police go to the parking lot to make sure that everybody's clearing out? Is that something we need to think about?
So usually, at that point, we have one stationed outside, two inside, two for sure everybody out, one for safety out front. Usually we don't have any trouble people worrying, just like leaning around. There's some cars and ticks off the next spot or wherever they want to be at.
Because I wanted to make sure the Vice Mayor was comfortable when, when he was talking about the time, that how do we get people off the property? Is it in a safe and quiet way? Because we have to think about all of this, right? Okay.
So the next section, it's a first step at aligning the user fees with our cost estimates, right? And so it ended up being a comparatively modest increase, if you do the math, for a total reservation. But you'll notice there's a stronger differentiation between, you know, resident and non-resident, should you wish to entertain it, right? So that's the important part there, but it increases the difference by, you know, 50% essentially. There's also an adjusted amount per hour for use of additional space. And if you proceed to the next page, what we found was common among other facilities was a, a, a support item per unit cost. They're typically modest, but it helps us recoup wear and tear on our fixtures and furniture. So our chairs, our tables, our table skirts, and all, all of these other things that, yeah, that go into, that other, other folks use for a private event and, you know, sometimes are, can be rough with.
Yes.
These are what's proposed for your initial consideration, sit right around the midpoint, if not a smidge under, of what's out there today. You know, tables appear to range anywhere from $2 to $5, depending on size per table. Chairs are, are pretty universally, if they're charged for, at least $1. A V sound, I think, was already within what is typically charged. And, you know, there's another example for per hour screen or projector. And really, that's trying to pull the wear and tear cost of the use off of the residence and onto the individual users. Because these are, these are pieces of equipment that we would otherwise use to deliver services or offer amenities to residents.
And if I may, Madam.
Sure.
And who operates the sound system and stage lights? Would it be the staff?
Yes, unless they bring like their own sound equipment, they have been take care of it. Or, or DJ, something like that will provide that type of.
And so the costs for that is, so those salaries, would they be covered under the, the fee? Would those would be recouped as well?
Yes, the, under the per hour rental cost. Yes, that's where the staff cost. Really, what we're trying to recoup with the A V sound system amount is wear and tear on the device itself. The staff is going to be there anyways.
So you think $50 is enough for the A V sound system station?
I think we, we range between 50 and 100. The average tended toward 50. It's just a flat fee to activate and monitor the equipment.
Okay.
These are, these are, and I kept to emphasize, these are starting points for discussion. But we're consistent with what we were seeing in other rental agreements.
And one more question.
Sure.
In the, I know we were, and what is the maximum hourly rental time? Because I noticed in, in a lot of the facilities, they generally didn't go for about five hours, four or five hours.
They, the, for the comparators that we looked at, one of the things that we noticed is that they had much more stringent controls on the hours of use. So for example, you know, some were only available between 6:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. because they were otherwise in use doing public service or something like that. You know, weekdays were obviously, across the board, pretty strongly curtailed for the most part. I would say what, what I saw most during the review were minimums. And so there's a certain point where. And so there's a certain point where it just, it, it's a financial cost on the, on the city to accept it under about the three-hour mark. Most were in that four to five-hour range. But our, looking at our historic reservations, they tend to sit somewhere around the five, five-and-a-half hour mark. But recall that that's influenced by the after-hours social rentals and not necessarily rentals by civic organizations and so on and so forth. I would, I would guess, yeah, go ahead.
The allotted number of hours, what's built in is the preparation and the decorations, depending on the type of event. So we can, you know, at the pleasure of the commission, either outline a spacing for just preparation, decoration, and then we can, well, you all can set the amount of time for the actual event.
And, and for that, best practice tends to be minimum 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after. And so if you look at the chart that says there's a three-hour minimum, that's for a two-hour duration event. Or, I'm sorry, that's for a two-and-a-half hour...
Two, three.
No, my, my mouth is right. A two-hour duration event, because there's 30 minutes on either side for setup, dedicated setup, dedicated cleanup.
So we wouldn't cop down.
Correct.
Oh, I understand.
Correct.
I have a question, ma'am.
Sure, Commissioner.
Thank you. For the setup and breakdown, would the city staff be responsible for setting out the tables? Or would the renter be responsible for, you know, taking them off the rack, setting them up, positioning, and then at the end, the same? Taking down those tables? Or is it just making sure the trash and the tablecloths are cleaned up and the restrooms are clean? What, what, what is entailed in that cleanup?
Currently, city staff set up and break down the chairs and the tables. And then our, our cleaning company assists with the bathrooms, with the, you know, the cleaning of the bathrooms, hallways, things like that.
Because I think before, people were breaking out tables and chairs, so that's why we only have staff maintaining that.
And with our, with our furniture, we would want at least staff to set it up so it doesn't get broken. And if somebody gets injured, they don't come back at us.
Right, right.
But what the intention of this does do is, it, it does contemplate shifting the cleaning responsibility onto the organizer, right? And so what is common is language that requires, you know, trash be bagged and placed in a specific location. I saw examples where that includes toting it out to the dumpster, leaving it outside for staff to deal with the next day, things of that. And so we would be looking to shift that burden back.
And you could maybe tie those trash bags, so that, you know, grandma or anything can't give it to me, they would...
I have one more question.
Sure.
I did send you some examples. With the percentage, I, a lot of the examples, a lot of the other organizations, they just had a set number of people that they had. They didn't do the percentages. Most of them were capped under like 100 people.
Yep.
The norm seemed to be about 80 people. I think it'd be better for us to just cap it at a certain number of people.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tullman?
Yeah, I don't think the cap is necessary. I think, you know, the event organizer, you know, can, can recommend what that amount is. And we have, like, the gym is available for plenty of space. So I think, you know, we shouldn't limit their capability of, you know, having a successful event the way they would like it, since they're paying for it. So I think it's their choice, you know? That's just me personally.
Okay, any other, you, did you want to comment on that?
I would just want to share a pretty cool facility until tomorrow and on Monday. And if you guys have the time, please come out. But District Heights Elementary will be here tomorrow for graduation.
Oh, they're doing their graduation tomorrow?
Yeah, we're partnering it down.
Okay.
To have the kids walk across and say, kind of like a bigger platform, it'll be pretty cool. So there'll be a lot of kids and parents here tomorrow.
Okay.
And on Monday as well.
Oh, okay. What times is their graduation?
Both are 9:30.
9:30.
I was, I'm the guest speaker for the graduation. They asked me to, the school asked me to be the guest speaker for the fifth grade graduation.
Yeah, right. And I'm the guest speaker for Longfield Elementary School tomorrow morning. I'll count for my own.
And I'll be over at, um, the other, the other middle school.
North Forest?
Now, now, North Forestville. Starvego Manor, what is it?
Francis Scott Key. Oh, okay. That works right. Yes. Okay. So did you want to make another comment?
Yes, so, so we're, we are asking you to weigh in on a lot, but I do want to underscore that once we have your feedback in this area, whether it's consensus from the dais or straw poll or what have you, we are returning with a full policy. So there is another bite at this apple before it goes into effect. And so we, we do want to make sure that, you know, staff is responsive to the commission's direction going forward in this area and that we can offer, you know, the best combination of services and amenities to residents.
And how do you want us, you want to just send them via email, or how do you want us to do it?
I, I would take them now, if you're able to do them now. That's helpful.
I need, I need to go through it in a quiet manner.
We can also, the other option that we have is, we can take the, so we were taking notes on everybody's position tonight. We can bring back the full policy on the 11th and highlight the specific questions that relate to these areas and the options that are, that came out during this discussion. So for example, one option that's still on the table is the end time. Are we at 10:30? Are we at midnight? Are we at something else? We can include that in draft policy, highlight it, and then the commission can make a determination there and just adopt it that night.
That sounds good.
Okay.
One more question, please, ma'am.
Sure.
Mr. Taylor, what, how long does it normally take for cleanup after events? I'm just trying to look at the different times, the 10:30 and the midnight time, to kind of factor in how long it would take an individual to exit the building.
Good question. Depending on the size of the event, on average, anywhere between like 90 minutes.
Okay.
Average window.
90 minutes.
Okay.
Going to give us, depending on the size.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions or concerns, thank you, Mr. Taylor. And we will be back on here on the 11th. Go through it again. Thank you. Okay. So this time, we have a com, public comment period. We will, I'll begin the public comment portion of the meeting. Members of the public who have signed up to speak will be allotted three minutes. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up to speak. When your time has expired, please yield the floor to the next speaker. So the first speaker is Harriet Irving. And it looks like your topic is streets and parking. Is this a continuation, or is this...
Well, I, if I could like to take a deep just for one minute. First of all, I'm former commissioner, Harriet Irving, from the city of District Heights, I've been a commission for eight years, nine years. The other thing is, today is D-Day. And I am a veteran, and we have veterans card, which I will hopefully be able to meet with Mr. Street about it. So we can get the timelines, get the signs and all the other things like that, okay? And we, on behalf of the city, all of us, would like to thank everyone who served in World War I, and those that died on behalf of our country, so we can have the freedoms that we have today. So we know that veterans are very dear to me, they do it to all of us, and our car is a baby of mine, so I definitely throw a statement on that. But instead of speaking with the street, if I could, if I could just ask that some consideration be given to maybe bringing more of the citizens and involvement in, in what you did. Like tonight, we sat here for how long and it's only three. It should upset you all that nobody was on here. And it's hard as heck to sit here and I don't have to run home for anybody to cook or do anything like that. You have people that probably would come if they can speak, okay? The three minutes, three minutes is three minutes if you have to force that. Even if they don't even, if they don't do that, when I go with Senator Nick Childs at his things, and while, you know, all of them, they don't put that on us. But since you have it, we'll, we'll adhere to it. But I would appreciate it and sure that other citizens of here would agree. It's a long time to sit here and to listen to what all of them say.
That's just...
But you have things at home. And I can guarantee you that people at home are not going to sit there and watch this as well as it'd be good when we get the television back again, because some people don't do YouTube. So there is a feeling, there is a feeling that you all don't necessarily want the citizens involved, okay? I'm just telling you what I'm hearing, I'm sharing it with you. The annexation, for one. I would like to add some say as to what not. We really want to annex, and if we do, if I could put in some suggestions, let's just take place, you know, what to add in. But anyway, I'm not going to stay any longer. I'm not going to do the streets right now, even though we need to look at them, they're mighty tight. They're not, I've had to back up too many times. But I just want to put this out here for you all's consideration, okay? And I guess I'm not just speaking for me, but you're not involved in the citizens you really want. Please consider that and to consider the fact that most of us can't sit here all night and people are not going to sit home and watch it all night, okay? So that's just a suggestion. I take it it's up to you, but it's just a suggestion, all right? From one elected official to another, and from a citizen to the people that are elected to represent me, that you can't represent me if you haven't talked to me and you haven't heard from me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, we really don't have a plan that we're putting forth to you all. So, so we haven't even gotten to that point. Because we are doing a down, we are...
To be able to...
Yeah, we, we, we have to have a plan to present. We don't have a plan right now to present.
You missed my point, but okay.
Okay, well, thank you, former Commissioner Harry Irving.
All right.
You're welcome.
And thank you for what you're doing, okay?
All right. Thank you. Do, so we don't have anyone else at this point? Do we have any announcements before I call for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I have.
Sure, Commissioner Janifer.
Speaking for the entire commission, we would like to extend our heartfelt condolences to Ms. Deborah Turner for the loss of her partner, Ray. The two of them have been in the city for, lived in the city for many, many decades. And so our hearts are, are breaking for the loss to Ms. Turner.
Amen.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I understand it's probably what, over 40 years that Ray...
Yes, yes.
...lived in the city of District Heights. So we're waiting for any updates on the service. And understand that he has a lot of family that's out of town. So it may be a minute before we hear any arrangements. Any other comments?
Yes.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of our staff who helped support District Heights Day last Saturday. The Recreation Department, the Public Works Department, police, I saw Chief heavily involved that day. Kelly, I mean, Ms. Bethia as well. It's really an all-hands-on-deck day. We're small enough where everybody really, you know, does what they need to, to fill the gaps. And so I just wanted to extend my heartfelt thanks and gratitude to all of our staff for making it a successful day. It was just wonderful to have it back here on the ground. It was a little bit cooler than the pavement at St. Paul's. And to see some of the decorations that people also did in their front yards down Kipling when we were doing our parade. It was very, very nice event. So thank you to all of our staff. And thanks to all the residents who came out and had fun with us.
Any other?
Yes. I want to, oh, thank you. Yeah, I want to echo my colleague and say, it was a great event. And also want to say thanks to those, those teenagers that helped out at the end. They helped, you know, pick up the chairs and tables, you know? So I want to say thank you to the, the staff. And of course, our residents will always come together and helping us out when they, when we need them, you know? They, they didn't complain, they just came and helped us clean up.
Vice Mayor.
And I'd like to just apologize to the residents, and I'd also like to apologize to the women and to Madam Mayor on this commission. One thing that I'd like to say is, we have, as a man, we don't protect our women, and it bothers me. And I'd like to apologize that some of us behave in a way that shames the faces of our fathers, the faces of our mothers. I come from a very strong woman, woman that sacrificed a lot for me. And there is a boundary that I will not cross when it comes to how I treat a woman. And I appreciate our women, and we should protect our women at all times. So I apologize for the behavior of people on this commission who lack self-control. I'm sorry to this community, and I'm sorry to everybody that look at this broadcast. And, you know, if I've ever behaved in a way that embarrasses this community, I'm sorry. And so I'd like to just put that out there, that we should all be better and that we should be able to practice self-control and understand that our women should be protected at all times, no matter how we feel personally. We should always respect our women and their authority, that the people have put them in a place of power, and that their power should be respected at all times. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Janifer, move to adjourn this meeting.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Tullman, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.